2019 will be a public work session at the administration office at 6:00 PM. April 15th, 2019 will be a regular meeting at Manton Elementary School, 6:00 PM. May 16th, 2019 will be a public work session at the administration office, 6:00 PM. May 20th, 2019 will be a regular meeting at Akron Elementary, 6:00 PM. June 13th, 2019 will be a public work session at the administration office, 6:00. June 17th, 2019 will be a regular meeting at Manton Elementary School, 6:00. Move on to Spotlight in the Valley. Number one, welcome and introduction of new employees.
Thank you. I think we've got one new employee here this evening, Mr. Billy Gilman. Mr. Gilman, could you please stand? Mr. Gilman is going to be working in our technology department at the elementary level down at Manton and Akron. So, welcome to Billy. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Uh, well, I was a part-time custodian for Mrs. Mills at Akron. And then my wife encouraged me to go back to school, get a degree. So, I worked a little bit part-time in Akron and then I became a part-time tutor at I can Tech. Or get my degree and then got an internship at the Bone Center and that's where I'm at right now. Kind of bittersweet to leave there. It's a nice, nice work environment. I think this would be a nice opportunity.
We appreciate you coming on board and appreciate your wife and what she does with our program and your outstanding three sons. They're great kids. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on to recognizing the following donations and donors. We've moved this item up into the Spotlight of the Valley. We will, or I will ask you in new business to approve these donations. But we'd like to recognize Tucker Golden Beef LLC. They graciously made a donation in support of our bus stop armed cameras to support safety of our students in the county. Also, we'd like to accept a donation from the Northern Indiana Community Foundation, specifically the Tom Wilson Memorial Fund. They've donated $1,450 to be used for stop-arm camera systems in our buses. We really appreciate those two donations. We're grateful for the outpouring of community support to help our students be safe within the community. We also have a donation from Donors Choose and it's with the Tepi Kewa Valley Middle School nurses, a donation of hygiene supplies. And then Woodlawn Hospital, our fourth donation. They are donating flashing safety lights to each student at Tepi Kewa Valley and Rochester Caston to attach to backpacks as an additional safety guard for children in our communities. So, I will ask you to approve those in new business. With that being said, we'd like to move on to Spotlight for the high school, Mr. Kreip. And Mr. Schreiber, do we want to try the lights?
Good deal and thanks very much for coming to the high school. You guys are welcome anytime. It's great to have you here. So, alright, so a few things that we just really want to talk about here right away are just really focusing on the PLCs anyway. This is something you guys have heard a lot about and very excited that we're committed to PLCs and we're all big believer. We made a lot of changes here at the high school to how the PLC process works and how those things kind of goes. Which, apparently, you can head it there. We go. And the biggest change that you're going to see right away is we moved away from grade-level teams where we had freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, on PLC to really focusing in on content areas. And one thing that teachers really asked a lot for was, well, how, especially after we took four teachers to Minnesota over the summer, was how can we get more time? How is that going to kind of work? If you recall last year at this time, when I was talking about changing the schedule to go into a seventh-period day and how can that all work in? Well, if you notice over there on the right, we have that SSR time. And SSR, you're going to hear a little bit more about later, stands for sustained silent reading. But also, that's a time during the day where we build into the schedule where our teachers get to collaborate as PLC teams in their content areas. And then you can see we have math and English going to meet three times a week and this will be in addition to the collaboration time we have built into Tuesdays and Thursdays. And this is extremely valuable time. Obviously, with math and English being your major accountability, they're the ones that we give three days. And if I can find a way to have every content area have three days, I would. But what you can see there is science, social studies, and foreign language, that'd be twice a week. And then everybody else, we have a way for them to meet during the week and just find extra time to collaborate and work together as a team. It's been an extremely effective way of doing things. Real positive comments from the teachers who you'll hear more about. But to have that time built into the schedule has really, really worked out well for us this year. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you. Alright. In addition to that, one thing that came up when we were in Minnesota was just really talking about, okay, well, we get PLCs and, but we want to find other ways to do things. Just a way to empower teachers. And so, what we also did is every teacher is going to be on their content area PLC and then they're also on a collaborative team where they're either looking at data or literacy or leadership, looking at our technology team. We have a public relations team that you'll hear from tonight. We have a team that just focuses on school celebrations. And these teams have just done amazing things this year. I'm very, very proud of the work that they put in. They usually meet on that Thursday morning time slot, as a general rule, but not always. But these guys have just done some great things and you're going to see a little bit of their work here today. So, very, very proud of all the other teams we have besides their content area teams. We couldn't have done this unless we have that schedule with that built-in time where our content area teams can meet. So, I got to share this, you know, for those who don't know, that's data from Star Trek: New Generation. Shelley Eagle, I want you to come up. She asked me today, "Who's the creepy guy you put in front of the data team?" She had no idea I was dataing. So, she's obviously not a Trapper. Yes. No. So, what I want is I'm going to bring Shelley up here first and they're just, she's going to talk about some of the English data that's up there. So, that'll be the next slide. Go ahead, Shelley.
Okay. Actually, you want me to talk now, too?
No, I'll do that.
Okay. Alright, so what you see here is a graph that has just a lot of information on it. And I'm going to kind of give you the short version of that. Our students meet several times a week for math RTI and English RTI. Primarily, this year, we focus on our sophomores and making sure that they have all the skills they need to be successful in our 10th-grade classrooms as well as on our I-Step testing that we have. So, this data that I have in front of you is NWEA data, okay? We do three rounds of NWEA. Generally, the first round, as soon as we come to school, we give them a day or so to acclimate and then we have them take NWEA testing just to see where they're at. The second round generally happens right around October-ish. And that's after, this data that you're seeing is after nine weeks of intense intervention where we are working on all of those skills that they're lacking. Those, you know, anything from reading comprehension to sort of writing skills. You know, we're focusing very intently upon those skills that kids need to be successful readers in our classrooms. So, this first round of data, you'll see there's ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders. And we have four categories that we kind of look at that are represented here. We look at lots of different things, but this is just a small sampling of what we're looking at. So, this first category is what we consider passing and growing. So, if we were to give kids the benchmark, which the 10th-grade benchmark is I-Step, if we were to give them that benchmark, they are likely to pass it based on NWEA and then also they're growing. From the first round when we took it, when we came back from school, from the break in August, to the time that we reassessed them in October, they are growing. They have achieved some level of growth. For some of those students, an average NWEA growth, an average years' worth of growth is four points. Some of these students did four points in one sitting. Some of these students did 25 points in one setting. Okay, so the interventions that we were able to see from our round two, our interventions aren't working. Okay? So, we have a secondary category is they're passing, but they're not growing. And that's valuable data, too. Obviously, the ideal data is everybody's passing, everybody's growing, we're all doing quite well. But this is wonderful data for us because then we know who specifically needs a higher level of intervention. Okay, so we can provide them more steps or more things that they need. So, that's wonderful. We have our not passing but growing, okay? That's a wonderful category. Those numbers are our highest. So, that combines to, the percent successful is those first three categories all together. We've attempted at our intervention to be a success at that moment. And then we have our last category, not passing and not growing. That's when the good conversations are really starting to develop because we're doing all these things to make kids successful. And if they're not passing, they're not growing, then we're talking to every single teacher that's in contact with that kid. We are just working, working, working to get as much data as we can. Now, it's not up here, but I'm going to share a statistic with you that's not up here. The sophomore class in particular, from the first round to the second round, achieved 475 points worth of growth? It was like 475 points worth of growth overall, okay? We had 129 kids test. Now, I'm not a math person, but that's some pretty good numbers per kid, okay? So, then our third round, which we tested them as soon as they come back from Christmas break. And the mentality behind that is if they know it after Christmas break, by golly, they know it. And we know that that's true learning that's occurred for them. So, the numbers for the third round don't look as impressive on paper, but when you sit and you work with these kids, it's still, they've still got it and they've achieved growth. Our average growth after all of our rounds of intervention, we're still averaging right around 300 points worth of growth from the beginning of the school year till January. We have no other NWEA assessments. The only thing that we're relying upon is what our teachers are saying. And so, our data team has asked our teachers, "What are you saying? You know, what are you noticing about our kids?" And our kids are growing. They are saying the right things, they're doing the right things, and they're just, they've impressed us beyond belief. So, when we look at reading data, which I have language data, too, but you guys would like to go home tonight, I'm sure. So, the numbers that we have here, I'm happy to elaborate any further, but we have some good stuff here. Is there any questions I can answer for that?
Thank you. I can't say enough just how much time and effort the data team, but also math and English, have put into RTI, which we'll talk a little bit when we get into the whole PLC process here in a minute. But just RTI is, you know, response to intervention and just being really data-driven and really looking at our data and knowing what it means. You know, you walk around the hallways and you should be able to ask the kid, "Hey, what was your NWEA score?" They should be able to tell you. That's a big improvement than where we were two years ago. So, really being data-driven and really understanding, okay, how do I use that data for evidence-based instruction? Shelley in the English department did an awesome job. And as has math. They've just done a great job putting this all together. This is math. I think you understood those four categories. You know, Mr. Conley challenged at the beginning of the year, "All means all." And certainly, we want all kids to pass that test. That would be great. But that growth is really one thing you're really looking at. Where were you starting? Okay, and where are you at now? We really debated a little bit about where to test and we really liked the idea of testing right after January. So, if you look at the bottom of round three, yeah, those numbers are a little lower, but we knew that. We knew that coming in after two weeks off and then doing, you know, who knows what and Christmas and everything else. We knew that they would drop. But we really feel confident that if you can do it right after you get back from Christmas break or winter break, we can feel, comes time for I-Step, you can do that. You know, we just had our first round of I-Step. It was amazing to see just our kids' confidence, some of their scratch papers, what they were writing down. You can really tell that the interventions and the work that math and English and the data team are doing are really, really good. So, these are really our main formulas we look at during the data. Alright, next up, we've got our public relations team. Come on, Kim. Come on, Debbie. You're coming up, too. Anybody else on public relations? Come on up, Crystal. Come on. Come on up. These guys have done an amazing job. Hopefully, you've seen the newsletter. I'm sure you've seen some of the videos. I'm not going to take any more of their thunder. I'll let them talk about what they're doing in there.
We are part of the public relations team. And at the beginning of the year, Mr. Kreip approached us and said he was going to do this. And, you know, I was actually a public relations major at college until college, until, you know, education called for a name, I guess. So, it was fun to put some of my skills to use doing this. But basically, our goal is to promote TBHS. Probably, everybody in here knows all the awesome things happening inside these walls, but the people outside don't know. So, our goal is to, you know, basically promote it. We want people to see some of the amazing things we're publishing, putting out there and go, "That's why my kids go to Valley." Or we want that person to look at it and go, "Hey, maybe we should consider this for our family." So, we're working at bridging that communication with our stakeholders, which is our students, our parents, community members. We're also just working at having a bigger presence on social media. Lori has been awesome at that. She's, you know, we send her things and she has it out within minutes on, you know, Twitter and Facebook. She's taught many of us, Debbie, on how to use Twitter. So, we're, you know, getting a little bit up there with our 21st century skills. Just one. Next slide. Next.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, what we did is we started out putting together a newsletter that was really archaic because that's all I knew because, you know, I had the whole one. So, we got, we were able to purchase a license for the Smores newsletter, which was really nice. It allows us to do a lot of different things. We can do email on it. We can put videos on it. We can customize it, all of that kind of thing. Our first newsletter, we hit 202 people. And then our next newsletter, you can see how many we have, 475 visitors. The map down there is all the people that have visited us on our last newsletter. And we've already, we've gone all over the place. We've gone through Mexico, everywhere that anybody has anybody. So, just getting our name out there and what we're doing is just a really good thing. We also figured out, after we did it, but we also figured out that there's a way to do it through the Smores application where we can put everybody's email in and then they will track who's actually opened it, who's actually viewed it, how long they viewed it. Well, we did that and we found that out after we did the last newsletter. So, that'll be on the next newsletter. But we're really happy with the way the community has accepted.
So, I have a question. So, how do you get on the newsletter?
Well, we just have to put your name. We put it on Facebook.
And you have the community and everybody's website?
We just, basically, what we did is we asked Mr. Lang to give us a list of all the parents that were in the school and all of their emails. So, what we did is we took all of the emails. There was 575. And we put them on a regular mass email and sent it out that way. So, what we can do is we can get more emails in and then we can attach those in as well. It's always on the TBHS Facebook page. There's always a link to it there as well.
Is there plans of trying to grow this?
We're trying as much as we can as we're learning the program and as we're learning to get out to the community and all the different things we have. We're adapting as best as we can.
Like, one really cool newsletter is it goes right to Spanish to translate it.
And that's kind of what sold us on the Smores program is it'll automatically translate. And that's why we went with the license we went with because there were several different options. So, we do have that. And the great thing is, is this, like Debbie said, which is a touch of the data. We can see, like, all over it with statistics. We can see, you know, how many people were reached by email. It's just provided a wealth of knowledge for us. We hope to grow that even.
So, Debbie, if someone wants to sign up for the newsletter, they can go to the home website.
You can go to the home website or you can contact any one of us. You can email us that way and then just give us your email and then we'll just attach it.
I have the privilege of talking to you about our videos. So, early in the year, we knew we had to get some videos out there. There's just so much that we could share through video. So, we started out, we were just researching videos, looking at good videos that different schools and organizations have put out. And so, we kept going from there, collaborating, collaborating with other teachers, Mr. Ingberg and Mr. Franklin. Eventually, started working with Mr. Ingberg and his work-based learning students and really started getting some great videos produced. And the views that they have, that they have received have been great. I don't know the number. I don't know if you know any of the numbers on the views.
Not to tap my head, but in the thousands.
They have, I think, exceeded our expectations and seem to just be getting better. The sports video, the Ag FFA video, they were both made through the work-based learning and were excellent. Nate Roberts, if you don't know Nate, just look behind the camera there. He will, he has produced a video that will be released this Friday and that is with the fax program, Mrs. Landis. And so, that'll be this Friday. And also, sneak peek. So, Valley sneak peek video, this is one where we got pictures, got student life and put it onto a video. Cammy put together and it's excellent as well. And all of these are available. You can find through Facebook page, also the newsletter. And upcoming, we have a work-based learning and CTE video.
That data is also created for us.
Nice. I've seen some of it.
What we love is that they're student-created. That's even better.
We had to, we have to go through and alter a couple because of the music that they had, but other than that.
Thank you. Alright, next up, we've got Mr. Walker and our literacy team. Come on up, Mr. Walker. We also got Mr. Michael here. We got Mr. Sun Besty also on the team. So, we'll have them talk a little bit about what the literacy team does.
So, as Mr. Kreip said, we meet every Thursday. Sometimes we even meet on Tuesdays for the hour, but we're really looking at ways of trying to get more books in the classrooms. So, this year, we've really implemented sustained reading. And every classroom, and we're really proud of that, every classroom has a pretty hefty collection of books in there for them to read. Even Mr. Shar's class out here that meets in this room, just in the teaching workroom, there's a whole bunch of books in there for the kids to have. And the expectation is, well, silent, obviously, but the idea of sustained reading. We turn off the tablets. It's only books. You know, as English teachers in our department, we've got books in their hands for a whole lot of different things. So, we're really proud of that initiative. Seems like after a little bit of struggle with some of the upperclassmen especially, but now I think everybody seems to be more. Fair?
Perfect.
Good. We also, and Mrs. Michael, Mrs. Landbesty, and several of us were part of what, when we went to see Dr. Anthony Mohammed on December 3rd, help me off that date, I think that's right. We didn't know, you know, the idea was we're going to leave the students behind here. So, we put together a pretty hefty reading regimen for the entire day. And so, do you guys want to speak to any of that? I don't know if you want.
Well, students had different centers that they went to in a certain area of the building. And we had about five centers in the library that I could speak to. And we had centers where all students had been trained to log into the library catalog. They could take a look at the books that we had on there. They could actually make reviews of the books that they had read. They could make recommendations to each other about books that they would encourage their friends to read. We had training on digital ebooks and audiobooks that they could access that we get free through the local public libraries. So, that was pulling in some of Akron Carnegie who pulled through Val Memorial. And then they also even had the option of audiobook centers where they could get together as a group and listen to books that way. So, that was my center there, were foreign language centers where students could read books in foreign languages. There was silence. There was tech reading. Students who wanted to read and listen to music at the same time, if they wanted two things going on, could do that. So, students were allowed to get up and move around, but yet each center was focused on reading.
And it took so much planning. I can't even tell you how many times we stayed till eight o'clock, at least, you know, several times, I think. So, putting all that together, and it was really, really, really cool to come back and see because the kids were all in basically the library hallway, working hard. And we put together this rewards program that, you know, each of those teams acquired obviously some work, but then they were worth a certain amount of points. So, the winning teams got a, you know, $15 gift card to Amazon. Second place was, I think, a $25 gift card. I think we have a couple of $25 gift cards as well. We've also had a handful of kind of smaller initiatives, I would say. We've got up front of our classrooms now, you know, what I'm reading, what I just read, what I'm reading, what I'm going to read afterwards. I think that's in front of everybody's classrooms now, too. So, I think the staff is on board as well. Oh, yeah, we've been doing reading posters as well. Those of you who've been around for a while, about 10 years ago, we started that. Kind of got away from it for a little while and now we're back to reading rocks posters.
And I would tell you guys, you know, we had the opportunity to go see Anthony Mohammed. I believe we took 30 teachers to go do that. That would never have been possible without the work that they put in to make it. So, our students had stuff to do during the day. It was valuable. It was learning. It was all about literacy. So, these guys did a great job. I'm really, really thankful for that. And then, you know, when you talk about PLCs and the power of PLCs. So, one day, I made the mistake, the principal makes is, you know, I had this meeting that these teams met on Tuesday. Ms. Michael, who I already know, you guys know she's awesome. We're so blessed to have her. She's like, "Hey, can you move it on Thursday?" She goes, "I want to be on my team. I've got my literacy team." "I want to be on the team. I've never got to be on the team." So, it's been great to have her. And now, we have our morning collaboration teams on Thursday. So, very good. But it's been awesome to have these guys because they've done a great job. Alright, Mr. Ingberg. Technology team is up next.
Realizing that I'm the only one here. The technology team is the technology team. With the technology team, we obviously started with the point, you know, what do we want students to learn? And then from there, from there, we started thinking, you know, in the classroom, what are the technologies that we are using or that we need to use? And so, you guys can see just some of the technologies that we've touched on. OneNote is our platform that we use to upload agendas so that if students are gone, they can easily get on it and see what they missed for the day. It's a file-sharing platform so that we can push documents out to our students. And there's even spots for them to turn in things on there as well. So, that was helpful kind of running through OneNote, helping teachers. We had a lot of new teachers this year that were not familiar with OneNote. So, kind of catching them up and then working with people to see where they're at. I think we had two go-rounds of the OneNote PD. The first one was less successful. The second one, I think we made a lot more gains in the second PD. GoFormative is another platform that we looked at and we thought, this is a really good platform for formative checks along the way. How do we know that students are learning what they're learning? And again, new teachers or just teachers that had been maybe less willing to try it in the past. And so, we started creating videos, uploaded them to something called Stream. It's through Office 365. All of our teachers have access to that. And so, there are videos that explain different things, different features of GoFormative. And June Yagel's our expert on GoFormative. I think she's, if she's not on the board yet for GoFormative, she will probably be soon. But she gets all sorts of updates and then sends them on to us. And then the last area was OneDrive. And that's actually something that we just recently did. OneDrive is basically, it's our failsafe. So, for too long, people have saved documents on our computers and on our servers. And as reliable or unreliable as they are, you can't just count on that. And so, OneDrive is just basically, we sat down with all the teachers and said, "This is something that you need to do and really is something that I expect for the students to do." You can't save documents on your computer on the server and expect them to be around forever because computers break, servers go bad. And so, instead of chance to say, "Hey, back up your stuff on OneDrive," it's a good idea. But yeah, we focused in on what will be beneficial for students. And I think it's nice to, when we do run these professional development activities, it's not somebody coming into our classroom saying, "Hey, you need to do this." It's us teachers getting together and saying, "What do students need to know and what do we need to know to improve our classroom?"
These guys have done a great job just training as a staff. We have some rock stars that can do the technology all day and are great. And then, you know, we have teachers on footprints, not naming their names. You know, and I will say this, too. I had to get you one, Shreiber. I'm sorry. But, you know, when you talk about like GoFormative... But, you know, when you talk about like GoFormative, for example, Shire is one of the experts. And I know Jessica's probably called me at least three times and said, hey, we're ready to order paper, we're ready to order paper. And I'm like, Jessica, we're good. One thing we challenged the staff was, if we can put it on the computer and that's going to serve the same educational purpose, then go ahead and do that. And GoFormative really allows that to happen. And our staff's done a great job of pushing it out there and it really lets you have that formative. It lets you grade it instantly for you, you can really see, you know, what standards you're really focusing on, which ones you're not. So these guys have done a great job pushing that out and rolling it out. One time we had the middle school came over and they also involved the PDs. Really thank these guys for all the time that they put in to not only explore those options, but teach them. It's not a difference. They've done a great job.
One quick question. So is this the earlier issue this year?
The technology team.
Technology team. They're all ready to issue, okay. And then far as going forward, so what's it look like, you know, this is this year, are we gonna challenge different technologies for the students in the coming years? Are we gonna repeat? How does it look like? I mean, I love what you're doing, no giving, I think it's great.
No, it's a great question. I think the first thing right now is just getting all the teachers up to speed, you know, getting on OneNote is hard. Getting that to work and just understand. I came from using Google a lot and Google Classroom, which OneNote's the Microsoft version, but just learning all those. But right now, all of our teachers do have, all their classes are on OneNote, so students absolutely find out what they did that day. I think we're right now at just the point of really perfecting these three things. And then once we get there, being able to develop further, but sure.
No, it's great. Because I mean, the kids that want to go to college, they're gonna see all this in college. The kids that are going in the workforce, those kids, you're gonna see that stuff in the workforce. You're gonna see it all over. So this is good.
And any of these, I don't think it's like a one and done thing. I think it's, in some cases, it starts a conversation and then teachers can come back to us. I mean, I know there's teachers here that say, hey, can you, you know, can you work with me on this? Just, you know, come and take a look at the computer.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Really the last thing on professional learning communities, come on up, Stacy, you're next. Is when we went to Anthony Mohammed over at Winchester and just really looked at the PLC, they really kind of put out there four questions for you to determine, well, where are you at? And so really four ways to look at, you know, where are you at with your curriculum being aligned, where are you at with common formative assessments, where are you at with your RTI, your tiered interventions, and where are you at with enrichment? And so we really took a look at, you know, our alignment. Very, very, very thankful to have Stacy, prior away from Scott, in middle school. She's a huge asset to us. And so I was gonna have Stacy just talk about curriculum alignment. We have something we call Yellow Sheet Day, so.
Well, and I love Yellow Sheet Day because Anthony Mohammed talked about at this school, they called it Yellow Sheet Day because teachers had to submit it on a yellow sheet of paper. That's the way they called it, Yellow Sheet Day. We call it Yellow Sheet Day, but there's no paper involved. So I'm not sure why we stick with it.
Anthony Mohammed said.
No, Yellow Sheet Day. Yellow Sheet Day is pretty much, it's basically where I worked with individual departments and we focus on our curriculum mapping. We have curriculum mapping K through 12. It's uniform, it's all the same through our whole entire corporation. The difference is that Chad had this idea of, let's narrow down that focus and instead of focusing on a whole entire year, let's focus on nine weeks at a time. So we actually started this in the third, the third nine weeks. We started before the third nine weeks began. I worked with individual departments and we really focused on PLC four essential questions. That's how our maps are set up. And teachers worked together to really hone in the standards and how that was going to be broken down through the nine weeks. One of the most wonderful things that happened in this were the conversations where teachers, I'm just gonna use an example, a geometry teacher was talking about, you know, these are some critical vocabulary words that I would really like for students to know in Algebra I before they come to me. So then we started to have conversations about shared vocabulary. How are we defining that vocabulary? How are we really focusing on that? Our conversations got deeper. We actually would, we would, we would add our assessments to this as well. We have a lot of new teachers, they didn't have the assessment. So when we started this then again on the fourth nine weeks, teachers would then look at the third nine weeks, they would make tweaks to that and they would then download the assessments that they had used. They were really mindful about how they would plan, what we would do if students didn't understand things. And they would make accommodations and modifications to their assessments too. That would all be uploaded to the curriculum apps. That, again, the tech department, where everything's on OneDrive, we're moving things from Google Docs into OneDrive, OneNote. So we're having more of a uniform focus on the curriculum.
Yeah. I would say too, that, you know, the basic idea then is these teachers, the Yellow Sheet Day is how you get a suck, that's how that came. So, so we have these teachers who are basically in the large groups for the whole day and all they're doing is just plotting out their curriculum for the nine weeks. The big thing PLCs, PLC will do is it goes from an invitation to learn to guarantee one. So what we're really looking at is what is going to be the guaranteed curriculum that we are going to teach these students over these nine weeks? And what we want to be able to do is eventually get to the point where we can post these on the website or on the web where a parent can say, okay, you know, US history, third nine weeks, these are the topics. So you have an idea of what's going on in that classroom and really guarantee that curriculum. If you just said, hey, go do a curriculum of math, well, we could have done something, but it would have sat on a shelf and not really been any good. This is a living, breathing document that is really a great use for their teachers, whether they've been around for a long time or some of the new teachers can give them guidance. Really appreciate everything that Stacy does, helping me along the way. It's been great. Can we go back one second? You know, we're still working on common formative assessments. You're gonna see those in some of our classes. We do a great job, especially with our Math 10 and also in our English RTI, we do a really, really good job there. We're working on the others. I mean, it's a process, we still got some growth there. Our tiered intervention, our RTI right now, math and English language arts is the tops. It's a lot of fun. I'll have principals call me. I certainly brag about it whenever I can. Again, this would be math and English, just absolutely killing it here. And then the enrichment part is something where everybody, that's kind of the last part that you get to, so we still got some areas of growth there. One word you learned when you go to the PLC conference, they talk about collaboration. And unfortunately, sometimes when you don't do PLC right, it just becomes a bunch of teachers just blabbing on and on and it can kind of get negative and not about the kids, not about the learning. I think you can tell by all these guys and all the work, it's truly collaboration and they do a great job. So I'm really, really proud of everything that they're doing. Okay. All right, Steph and Karen, you guys want to come up? Okay. If you guys remember, last November, I think it was, we talked about pathways and, or maybe my thing before that, we just talked about what does that mean? So I kind of wanted to just go through where we're at, just looking at the senior class, give you guys an idea of how does that all work and everything. And so guys, jump right in if I say anything wrong. Okay, good. So we have 140 seniors and as you can see, we have 82 Core 40 diplomas. Okay, so that would be the 44 credits. That would be the students too that pass both ICNS. Okay, so 82 out of 44, 23 technical honors, 36 academic honors. Now those, those kids could be both, right? So don't think that they're separate, different kinds of kids. You can get your Core 40 and a technical, or Core 40 and an academic. And you could actually get a Core 40 technical and an academic, but just to give you an idea of how that breaks down. But here's the big one I wanted to show you. It's 51 students. And again, I want to stress, this is potential. If everything goes according to plan right now, which these guys do a great job really staying on top of our students' interest. So this is just potential data. We hope to come back later in the summer and be able to tell you officially. But right now, 51 students would graduate using a pathway. So without pathways, that would mean that 51 students would need a waiver. So that just goes to show you how big of a change this really is. And I think there's still some questions out there about pathways, but this is one of the really great things about having the graduation pathways. 51 students graduate that way. We have one student on a general diploma. That's usually the, not 100%, but actually I think I answered. The big hangup there is Algebra II. Algebra II is the one real difference between a Core 40 and a general diploma. That's just really hard for some students to get over. We have 15 early graduates this year. We have three certificates of completion, something of functional skills, students who that would be. We will have three 50-year seniors that are right now are planning on coming back and working with Mikey that just, for whatever reason, maybe got caught further behind their freshman sophomore year and couldn't get back. And we all know what a great job Mikey does and work it. And Stephanie wanted me to stress to you guys, this is just potential, right? She likes to come in really low or like proms really low and way over perform. Right now, we're looking at 97.8, which would be outstanding. And that would be an increase over last year, which I think was 94.2, am I correct? Okay, I thought it was 94.2. So again, though, that's also, the pathway's really helped us out with that. Any questions on where we stand right now?
That's great.
All right. Okay, I'll stop talking and you guys go ahead and talk about guys.
So we've started scheduling students for the next year. I've been to the middle school to talk to the incoming freshmen and we had parents. It was a great turnout because the incoming class of 2023 has different graduation requirements than everybody before. They're kind of required to do a pathway or one of the honors diplomas. So we want to make sure the parents and students understand that. And I think it's great that we offer so many pathways here. We've got 15 different pathways that incoming classes can take. So I think it's wonderful that our school offers that. New classes, we're offering all students AP World History instead of just regular World Histories. So they have potential to earn a college credit. And then a cybersecurity class, we were lucky enough to get grants to help pay for that. And then upcoming AP tests, we have a record number of students taking AP tests this year. So we offer tests right now in environmental science, English literature and composition, chemistry, the calculus BC. And some of the students will be taking several of those subject tests this year.
I want to talk just a minute. If you guys remember, we came and just talked about rigor and how that all works. And so this is a record number of tests. And that also is on top of all the ACP and all the dual credit that involve the test. So these are 64 students taking at least one and really multiple, multiple AP tests. This is a great thing for us and just really, just gonna take this to the next level and provide those opportunities for kids. But providing this rigor, this is huge.
Upcoming event we wanted to share is, it's called the GPS to Success Career Expo. And the Cascasco County Chamber of Commerce hosts that. And so our upperclassmen will have the opportunity to attend that on April 17th, along with a lot of other area schools. And many students can connect with internship opportunities and some even line up jobs for summer or even if they're seniors potentially after graduation. So it's a really great opportunity for our students. There's a lot of local businesses from the county there that are participating. So it's really great. We also wanted to share about the work ethics certificate. It's a new initiative with the students in the event. And we've been collaborating with other local schools. We currently have 37 seniors on track for that. It's a very rigorous criteria they have to go through with attendance and their GPA and also completing community service or work experience hours. So there's several rounds they go through for eligibility and evaluations. So we're very proud of those students. There are certain incentives they can get if they receive that certificate. Some employers will honor that with guaranteed interviews or hiring at a little bit higher wage. And there's even some tuition assistance with IBtech. So it's an exciting opportunity for some of our seniors.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Rattler Week. Chicken and out, Kami and out. For sure.
Okay, so Rattler Week, that was... Okay, so to earn some money, we had, teachers could wear jeans for a week for some donations. And then we had the Spirit Days.
The Spirit Days were Red Trail, PJ Day, Athletic Day, Nerd Day, and on Friday we had Wear Red for Ride the Day.
And all week, kids could wear hats. So that brought in a little bit of extra money. And then two times that week, we brought around the igloo ice cream and sold wagons, snacks out of wagons to earn a little bit of money. Also during the mall games, we did the igloo ice cream.
We had the minute to win in competitions and the juniors won that.
At Soma Football Dance, we had 107 kids come. So it was pretty good attendance for a dance.
As we told you last homework meeting for the sumo wrestling challenge, if we raised $2,000, then Mr. Kreska and Mr. Krack would put on the sumo wrestling costumes and wrestle. And sorry, Mr. Krack, but Mr. Kreska let you win that last round.
And then we had an obvious donation from community members that gave a little bit of money. And then our grand total was $3,600.
Nice.
Also, when we asked the students, how many have been like affected by Ray Lunt's hospital or someone they know who has gone? More than three fourths of our students answered yes.
Very good. So who sponsors, who's the sponsor of that blog? Kami?
Crystal.
Hey, Crystal. Okay. Thank you for your leadership of that and allowing these kids to do the things that they've been able to do to generate that amount of money. It's outstanding. Nice job, guys. Mr. Kreska, not taking it easy on me. I am glad though, I have a very nice assistant principal that probably didn't take it easy. I do not say that. Okay. Getting in and trying to wrap it up here. One thing I want to tell you that's going on that's really, really cool that's happening. And again, this is a big credit to Stephanie and Karen with our bone services we're going on. We just weren't necessarily happy with how our students that needed help were getting help. One big issue is that they were having to go to Warsaw and they'd have to do an intake and then they'd have to come home and then they'd have to go back to Warsaw and do what's called a family care plan. Well, for a lot of our students, just getting to Warsaw is not really an option and their parents don't want any part of that. So we're just really struggling with, how can we get rid of that roadblock? How can we get rid of that barrier? So we sat down with Bone and we said, could you give us one day a week where you could just come here? We'll give you whatever you need and take care of the intake and take care of the family care plan right now. So these parents only have to come in one time, basically sign and then they can be done. And we can start getting these kids the social emotional help they need. And so that's happened. It's now two months in. I believe there's five slots each day that can come. It's about a three, two and a half hour, three hour process to go all the way through this. And so we've got five slots and Bone's came here, it's been great. It's really helped our communication in case, you know, maybe they can't get ahold of somebody or they're running late and we've got their phone, we have all the numbers. It's just been fantastic. And I don't know how many we've had refer to, I believe it's over double digits right now. Just kids that before were getting their services kind of through our contract with Bone and through our student assistance plan. Mr. Conley, we shared our concerns with him and he got us in touch with Matt Graham and Bone and then it was just instantaneous. Next thing we know, we've got kids. And the biggest thing for you guys to know is we took away a few roadblocks. Now more kids are getting services they need. So the first Thursday of every month, right here at the high school, we set up those appointments and they come in and it's just been a great thing. So it's really strengthened our partnership with Bone. We have more kids getting help today. Okay, Mr. Jones. Dylan, you're back up. Come on, Mr. Jones.
For those of you who don't know, Dylan is our FFA president. So Mr. Krack passed, did a little presentation. I volunteered. I think, you know, we talked with all these other kids that's come up here, student council, I think we always want kids talking before the people turn their skills. So I'll write over if you think we can have a talk on this.
Okay, so FFA week, as I mentioned, we had Dress Up Days, which were Camel, America Day, Branch Day. For FFA Sunday, we went to Olive Branch Church of God.
About Branch.
Olive Church of God.
It's your church.
And then we had went laser tiny outdoors, which was a lot of fun. And then we had appreciation supper that week too. And we raised $7,000 for the worker auction. And then during that week... And then during that week, we had Kiss Critter, which was pretty interesting and we raised a hundred dollars from that. And it went to Helping Hands. And then, uh, that week also we filled out for district proficiencies. And I got first place in the forestry part and then Sarah Tucker got first place in beef cattle placement. And Jeremy Gagnon got second place in act services. Also last year, Shelly's Triplet got first place in beef cattle entrepreneurship and Jack Cutter got first place in act services. So all the first place winners go to state. And then Rainy Shute, one district, uh, state farmer. Uh, coming up events, we'll have livestock judging and then state buildings on April eighth, ninth. Oh, and then FFA always helps with, uh, Costco, so our day. So we go there and it's really interesting time. We take kids on guides and they listen to presentations, a whole bunch of students. Twenty-five members will participate in district leadership contests. So we each do different events like forestry or, uh, there's motors group and other events. And then the national soils team is competing first week in, first week of May in Oklahoma. And then we were voted outstanding FFA chapter over twenty-two schools in our district, so that's pretty.
Do you guys have any questions? Keep up good work, you're doing awesome. It's fun watching you guys go on and challenge and meet and see the results and keep doing good jobs. Exciting. Thank you. Good luck on the hunt. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then last but not least, we have some, uh, students we want to recognize tonight. Come on, Dakota, you're first up. Come on up. Mr. Reiner, I think you're here too, watch him come on too. Yep, okay. Come on, all the way up. You gotta get on Nate's camera. Come on, Dakota. So as you can see, Dakota won silver rating at, uh, the state ensemble, the summer ensemble. So why don't you, uh, Mr. Reiner, why don't you just talk about what that is and how that happened?
Uh, making it to state, you have to qualify, uh, as a gold medal at solo ensemble. And then, once you get that gold, it goes like, it's like, uh, it's like golf. You want to get the lower score, uh, from nine to thirteen point five is the gold range. And once you get that gold, you go to state like a few weekends later. And then, once you get to state, you have the same, like, range of, like, scores. And, but I guess, like, it's harder, like, judged harder just since you're at state, it's harder to get to. And I got a silver medal, which was like thirteen, fourteen to, what's that? Sixteen, sixteen point five. And it took me a while to get there. I mean, I had to start in, like, the summer and then practice all the way until January. So it took a while and it took a lot of time.
What is your difficulty playing?
I'll take sax. And it's pretty fun though.
Might be to compete against the state level?
Uh, well, it's mostly competing against how well you play the piece rather than playing against other people.
Gotcha.
But there's a lot of people that... It's, the parking lot's really packed too. Like, at state, we had to, like, drive around, like, in circles trying to find a parking spot. Took at least twenty minutes.
How long do you bet twenty minutes? How'd you get it?
Uh, I've been playing my sax for seven years and I think I started seventh grade or eighth grade.
For practice?
Yeah. I started seventh grade and I've been getting gold medals since then up until state, which I got silver. But since it was only my first time on the state.
You got into it because?
Oh, I got into it because, like, okay, so in fifth grade, right, like, you're about to go on to sixth grade and they, they bring the instruments and they, like, try them out. I tried out, uh, sax and I didn't play it at first, but that didn't deter me from wanting to play it just because, like, I just, I saw it on TV, I heard it and I'm like, man, I really want to be able to play that. And I just took my time and then built up being able to play it and then it happened.
Good job. Good job, Mr. Grant.
Yes.
All right, good job, guys. And then we have, uh, Kylie Masterson is here tonight too with Mr. Williamson. Come on down. Kylie, you're the gold medal at our state ensemble, so we're going to have them, uh, talk about how that happened and how that got there. They're all yours.
All right, so, um, in August, I believe I picked out a song on a selected list and I sang Bill Faccetti. And then I practiced that until, for like, a long time. And then on, then on January twenty-sixth, I went to districts and I sing my song and I got a gold medal with that. So I had two or three more weeks to practice. And then I went to Indy on February sixteenth, I believe. I sang there and I got another gold medal.
Oh yeah, it's my second year going to state. Last year I went and I sang Ave Maria, but I got a silver.
So you're a senior?
Yes.
What's your plan?
Um, I plan on attending Columbia College Chicago and I want to get a Bachelor in Fine Arts and Musical Theater.
Dakota, I forgot to ask you, what, what was your plan for next year?
Uh, I plan on going to Indy University Oklahoma and, uh, it's like a bigger side.
Great. I can tell you guys, I know, Mr. Connolly, you were there, uh, Kylie got to sing the national and have the unified, uh, state championship and it was, uh, it was awesome. Blew the roof off, uh, the gold practices. She was really, really good, so great job.
Want to see her again this weekend?
The musical.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
And then last but not least, we had two JAG, but, uh, Mr. Males, are you here? I don't think either one's here tonight.
I don't know, they are not.
You want to come up and just tell us a little bit about it? I know that Fernanda did really, really well, uh, so why don't you just take a minute and just talk about, uh, JAG and, and how these kids did down at the competition?
Great, so, uh, in February at South Bend at the Croc Center, we had, uh, the regional JAG career development conference. And part of the conference are multiple competitions with various, uh, skills that are tested. Autumn Buell, uh, working with her specialist at Burkitt, uh, Tanya Boe, uh, she competed in the employability skills competition. And for the second year in a row, she qualified for state. She won it this year. Uh, she was second both, uh, at region and at state last year. This year she won, um, region, but unfortunately was unable to attend, uh, the state conference. And then, uh, my student, uh, Fernanda, uh, she competed in the writing skills competition and she steadily kept improving, practicing, uh, problem solving and areas of progress, uh, throughout it. She won it region and then, um, once you win at the regional level in the writing skills competition, then you are able to work with a technical advisor to help you prepare for the state competition. And she worked with Dr. Engel and, uh, submitted her essay. It's a live essay, kind of like a college essay exam format at a regional level. Then you can take that, work with your technical advisor, uh, modify it, uh, and submit that at the state competition. You also have a very brief interview and, uh, a language skills, uh, written exam or multiple choice exam. And so she did very well there, got second place in the entire state.
That's all we got, guys. I'm sorry for a little long. Any questions?
Great presentation.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for this morning. So we want to move on to student reports and you guys got any more?
Yeah, we have, uh...
Awesome.
Uh, Wednesday, we have the National Honor Society induction and that's at seven o'clock. And then, uh, Wednesday, that day, the students take the hazard out in the morning.
Sprint sports started and we had our first round of ice stuff last week and the musical will be Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Next one.
Hey Dylan, on behalf of the board, I just want to say, you know, great job being a leader in your class and standing now. Go Brown. All right, time for items from the visitors. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the board this evening?
We're going to move right on to approval of the consent agenda. Number one, approve the minutes of the February fourteenth, twenty nineteen executive session. Number two, approve the minutes, February eighteenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting. Number three, approve the hiring of the following personnel. Randy Dotty, instructional assistant, Mentone Elementary. Brandon Oswald, custodian, Mentone Elementary. Devin Amberd, instructional assistant, Mentone Elementary. Billy Gilman, technology associate, School Corporation. Brooke Cresca, speech language pathologist, Mentone Elementary School. Number four, approve the following extracurricular assignments. Evan Boggs, assistant track coach at the middle school. Jasmine Cordes, assistant soccer coach at the middle school. Casey Wise, assistant football coach at the high school. Carl Weaver, assistant football coach at the high school. Lauren Mulinari, assistant track coach at the high school. Casey Wise, assistant track coach at the high school. And Hope Masagel, assistant track coach at the high school. Five, accept the resignation of the following personnel. Eric Carlin, assistant track coach at the high school. Meredith Adams, instructional assistant, Mentone Elementary. And Sheena Yoo Rushi, instructional assistant at the high school. Number six, approve the following, which are the... Shady Adams, third grade teacher at Akron Elementary. Number seven, approve the out-of-state trip for the high school soils team. Number eight, approve the out-of-state trip for the high school, high school livestock judging team. Number nine, approve the out-of-state field trip for the high school French class. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Would you kind of all make that motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Scott? Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda tonight? All right, all in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, state by saying no? Motion carries. We'll move on to, uh, claims and payroll.
We have one pre-written claim listing this evening dated February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen in the amount of six hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and three cents. Uh, a regular claim listing is dated March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars and two cents. We have two payrolls this evening dated February eighth, two thousand nineteen in the amount of three hundred eighty-one dollars, four, four hundred sixty-six, I'm sorry. Three hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. February twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of three hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. I submit these claims to payroll.
Do I hear a motion to accept claims and payrolls?
President, I have the motion to accept the claim to payroll as well.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Let's move through the discussion on claim to payroll this evening. All in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, state by saying no?
The school board has been provided a record solid bank statement on the financial report of the funds from the month of February two thousand nineteen. In summary, our receipts and disbursements from February two thousand nineteen are... Total receipts for all funds, one million, six hundred fifty-three thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Total disbursements for all funds, one million, five hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you, Blaine. Move on to old business. We've got school board policy changes in section one.
Yes, I provided you with, uh, some changes, uh, in the first, uh, section of our school board, uh, policy manual. Uh, one was, uh, deleting the assistant superintendent from the, uh, uh, School Corporation, uh, history of the, of the Tiffany Valley School Corporation. And then also updated phone numbers, uh, that needed to be changed within that policy. So, uh, there are no, uh, objections. We, I'm asking for your approval of section one of the school board policy.
Do I hear approval of the policy changes on section one? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, state by saying aye? All opposed, state by saying no? Move on to new business.
We'll accept the following donations that I, that I talked about in the spotlight. So we've got Tucker Golden Beef LLC, or Indiana Community Foundation, uh, donors choose, and then Put On Hospital.
Do I hear motion to accept the following donations?
I'll make that motion, I will accept the following donations.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, state by saying aye? All opposed, state by saying no? Move on to number two.
Uh, we've got a set of donations here, uh, to approve from the Casco County Endowment Youth Services, KEES grants. Uh, we've got two thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars being awarded to four different teachers within our school corporation. Uh, our teachers do a great job of writing these grants and Lori works with them and helps them, uh, submit those grants. We've got four really good initiatives here. As you look at Kylie Gass, a kindergarten teacher, uh, her, her grant is focusing on Play With A Purpose. And, uh, Rosie Janzma has some technology for an iPad pilot project. Uh, Deb Miller, um, Akron Elementary, uh, guidance counselor. Uh, she's got calming box materials working with students, um, with the, the S E L aspect of her job. And, uh, Dan Franklin, uh, here from the high school, industrial technology teacher, uh, residential construction modules is what he has gotten his grant for. So we would, uh, we would ask that you approve these grants. The great thing about KEES, um, we, this, this is, uh, they're granted by, uh, a student panel that, that goes through all of these grants. We've got some Valley kids, but then there are kids from all over the Casco County that look at all the different grants and you see that, that our teachers do a great job and we're, we're always awarded several grants for our school corporation, so we appreciate that leadership opportunity.
Do you know what, do I hear a motion to accept the following key?
I'll make that motion, I will accept the grants.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, state by saying no?
Um, I'm asking, uh, as we look at, uh, our section two of our school board policy manual, in, uh, in section two point three, we will delete the assistant superintendent's, uh, recognition within there. That, that position is no longer in our school corporation. In section two point four, we will add, uh, moment of silence, pledge of allegiance, roll call in upcoming board meetings within that. Uh, we're just really cleaning up the order of that, um, for, for future meetings. Uh, two point five, um, the boards from, from several years past, uh, they, they had attended national school board association conferences, uh, and I think that was before, uh, the state association was, uh, was very active. And I think that that's a focus that we would like to move towards. So we would take out that national part, strike that, and then add the Indiana School Boards Association Conference as something that, uh, our board would have the opportunity to attend. Uh, in two point seven, we're renaming, uh, these are, these are different organizations that, that we belong to. As a school corporation, we're renaming more central association of colleges and schools to advanced ed. They do our accreditation for, uh, for, for our school corporation. We're adding the Indiana Small and Rural Schools, Indiana Association of School Business Officials are, uh, uh, two more associations that we belong to. I didn't realize that would be that dark up there. I wouldn't have highlighted it that way. Apologize. But you do have this in your, on your board docs or you will. We've changed on two point eight, um, our attorney, uh, that, that we use from Indianapolis, from Bose McKinnon Evans to Lewis Cappus, uh, and that was, that was made, uh, probably about five... And that was made probably about five years ago. Section two point five, talking about, it was decided that we wanted to remove the sixty-two dollars for attendance at special meetings that board members could receive. So, we're taking that out of the board policy here. And as a school corporation, we appreciate that and how we just, we're trying to focus funds on the classroom. Section two point twelve, we changed board members receiving a complimentary ticket to the sectional basketball, football, from one, or I'm sorry, from two to one ticket per individual that had been past practice for several years. And I don't know when that went away, but we just really want to update the policy in terms of what we're doing. And then the chain of command, you'll have the old chain of command and then the proposed on board docs to compare those. And that's really taking the assistant superintendent's position out of that old chain of command and realigning our different personnel that way. So, we will, I'll bring these back to you in April. And as we have questions, we can refine those. But that's my initial proposal here, not asking for approval in this meeting. I'm just talking about that under the initial consideration in new business. Moving on, we've got our go-open, exciting Lori and Tanya. You guys want to both come up? Yeah, why don't you come up here?
I'm pretty excited and outstanding and outstanding for Tippany Valley School Corporation. To give you a little bit of background, in two thousand sixteen, the United States Department of Ed launched an initiative, and they were encouraging states to look for more high-quality, open educational resources, OERs for short. And what they are, I've got a little definition here. They're teaching and learning and research materials in any medium that reside in the public domain. They've been released, or they're under an open license that permits no-cost access, use, adaptation, and redistribution by others. So, what they do, we're all familiar with copyright law, or should be familiar with copyright law. This is a different license. Under the copyright law, it's CC Creative Commons. And when you start looking at materials now, you'll start seeing that CC. And what that means is the author of those education materials said, "I want to share it. I'm not fighting for it, but I want to share it openly." So, it's, the USDA has created a database of these high-quality educational materials that are for anyone to use. You can use them, you can modify them, you can share them. It's all out there. So, in two thousand sixteen, they had fourteen states sign up as a go-open launched state. Indiana was one of those first adopters back in two thousand sixteen. So, in kind of the buckets of educational materials, we're so used to the paid textbook rental, the hard textbook, the syllables, the workbooks that nobody uses sometimes, the classroom sets. This is really changing mindset to, and changing the wording of what you think about education materials to, it's going to be more relevant, it's going to be up to date. Our textbooks are normally made for states that are not going to match the standards or be for Texas or wherever. So, we can be using materials that are relevant, up to date, and our teachers are doing this anyway. And so, this is an opportunity to officially say, "Hey, we trust you. Teachers are our biggest asset. And we trust them to build our own curriculum for our students." So, our curriculum will be student-centered, personalized, and we just see great things happen to that. So, it's an announcement that we have to make tonight. In Indiana, there are only five other school corporations that are considered or eligible or named as a go-open launched district. And on March sixth, we received approval from USDA and IDO that we are the sixth school corporation state to be named a go-open launched district. And it's in an impressive league of school corporations. East Noble School Corporation, Hamilton South Eastern Schools, Noble School School District, MSD Warren Township, and MSD Southwest Island. So, congratulations to you. The whole part, we already have a launch team ready. Our high school, English Language Arts, they've been doing this on their own forever to supplement their curriculum. I went with them, took a Creative Commons workshop last week, so we learned more about copyright law and the right way to do it. And they are a rock start. They are ready to go. I loved it when the group was asked, you know, "What do you have to say about using the Creative Commons? What do you think?" One teacher said, "It's about we, it's about community, and it's about collaboration." And then the other teacher said, "It boils down to doing what's best for kids and for using the best resources for our kids." And the last teacher said, "This is going to be a game changer for the faculty," so we have it to go.
Just to add to that, I'm happy with the ELA team, before they went there and talked about all of this after Lori and I had gone to the initial meeting. And talked to them about what it would take. As you know, when we adopt textbooks, it's a six-year adoption cycle. So, this is a six-year commitment by this ELA team. I'll be meeting with them this summer. They've already got their curriculum apps that they've been working on with Stacy, that she done prior to there. But we'll be looking at that and plugging in the materials that will be used to support that in the classroom. And we'll start this summer really building that, and then every year, I'll be meeting with that team again to go through that and see what we need to update, you know, new things that have come out so that that curriculum is living, breathing document that's always updated. And our kids are always getting the most recent, most relevant materials.
Any as of here, you know, I'm excited that, and too, we went on a school site visit last week, and I just quote that one of the ladies said, it just really sticks in my mind, is that, isn't it cool? Isn't it great when you're a small rural district and you can pivot easier? So, we can make changes to really be competitive with our academics, and it'll be a game changer, so.
So, we're also hoping, because this is our pilot group that we're starting with, our rock start team. We're hoping that as we move forward, year after year, that we can start adding other grade levels or other textbooks, that we go to this format instead of adopting from the textbook company. You know, we're just really excited about it and looking forward to the ELA team here at the high school pilot.
Good. Thank you very much. Fantastic. Want to talk about the innovation planning grant?
Yes. If you remember, back in December, we were awarded, or maybe it's November, awarded that innovation planning grant as it relates to technology. Our grant leadership team in December did a self-assessment, and we got sixty-four huge report. It's pretty intensive and a lot of information. Also, a couple of the requirements of the grant were using outside vendors for an infrastructure audit, technology infrastructure, instructional audit as it relates to technology. We looked at several different vendors, and we interviewed them, called their resources, talked to their school corporations, and we believe we found the best fit for Tippany Valley. Riverside Technology has been selected to conduct the infrastructure audit. And what they'll be looking at is our high-speed connectivity to the schools, data privacy and security, high-quality, low-cost devices in our one-to-one initiative, digital citizenship, which is so important, and responsible use of quality digital content and resources. And that's where I think those OERs fit right into this. They'll have certified engineers come to all of our schools and walk the perimeter of every classroom and look at the access points and check it initially, so pretty excited about that. On the instructional audit, you know, we interviewed a couple vendors. And when we got to looking at our district accreditation report from November seventeenth, it was really all the data that we were looking for. So, it did make sense to hire someone to come in to give us the same information. So, we contacted the state, we said, "Hey, can we have a waiver for that? Use that, reallocate that money for something else." And they said, "That's correct. It really told us, one of the areas we really need to look at was digital recording requirements." So, we took that reallocation, and it's opening up this evening. We're conducting a district-wide survey to our staff, our parents, and our students, grade five through twelve. And we're so excited about this. The window starts tonight, so through March twenty-ninth. It'll really inform us of what we need to focus on for the next five years. And I can't wait to hear from the students, what they think about our technology, about our culture, and what we need to focus on. So, that was really an opportunity for us through the grant. The grant also required a couple of school visits. We went last week to South Petna, rural school district, doing one-to-one very well. Got a lot of good information there that day. We're taking a elementary team to Washington State, they're having a parent night, so we'll look at that at the elementary level. Really, the goal of this grant is technology and infrastructure to create student-centered learning involving the effectiveness of technology in innovative spaces, and to create next-generation classrooms to improve student engagement. We have to have a comprehensive plan by December of twenty nineteen. So, we're in all of us this year. Any questions?
This will allow us to apply for other grants.
Yeah, that's the main thing on this. The innovation planning grant makes you eligible for March of twenty twenty to apply for the next grant. It'll be fifty thousand dollars, and that could be devices, it could be whatever our fund uses that down there.
Driver's education, Mr. Schreiber.
Alright, just kick back a little bit. We have some more meetings before, but, hey, this is going to be real quick. Just wanted to come up and talk a little bit about driver's ed, what we've been doing. It's been a while since we had a report. If you were at the last meeting, probably four or five years ago, where we talked driver's ed, it was bad news. We had a parent that their daughter couldn't drive, and it went on and on. But driver's ed here, I want to, one, just appreciate the use of corporation car. One thing that we did, try and keep costs low, and we have not increased the cost of driver's ed since that meeting. And so, two hundred fifty-five dollars for the driving part of driver's ed. And if you look around at driving schools, and there are very few high schools that offer driver's education more than Waco does, I think that's the only one in the area. We did, people who want to come here from either homeschool or community, or from other schools, because it is so cost-effective here, and we couldn't do that without the flexibility of corporation allowing us to use that car. The other thing we've done that's sort of been a change as technology comes around, is the thirty hours of instruction, there are numerous online courses with the state of Indiana counts. So, students can, when they turn fifteen, sign up for an online course and do the bookwork online. And that works for a lot of kids. One thing that's happened here lately is we've had some interest, and really what I'm asking for tonight is the opportunity to offer a summer classroom course like we used to for kids that may want to do that. And again, we penciled that out. We felt that thirty-dollar fee, which online, I mean, we're for twenty-five to fifty dollars for these courses, but a fee of thirty dollars per suit for that classroom, and then having at least fifteen students sign up would allow that class to go. And we would make sure that we don't interfere with any other summer school offering as far as for those kids that want to take summer PE. We try to run that. We're limited by the regulations of the state. There are a lot of state regulations, you know, code for what you have to do. We can't offer more than three hours of instruction a day. But we would try to run that so the kids could take a bus out here, be in summer PE class if they wanted to, and then stay, eat lunch, and go ahead and take this class in the afternoon. We offer one section, and then combine apples and dry. So, that's really what we're saying right now, what I was really asking for. Again, the other thing that probably has been an informal opportunity is that if there is a student, and this was kind of brought up by that parent, you know, several years ago, if there's a student who is struggling, who doesn't, in the six hours of required driving, passing class, or an additional twenty-five dollars an hour, they could add hours if they wanted to. The other update, or the thing that we've been fortunate enough to do, is we became a waiver school a couple of years ago. And if we, at the end of the course, add that setup now, which is optional for our kids, they can take the test with us here in our car rather than at the DMV. And that's something that parents really like. One, convenience, and in two, they're familiar with the instructors, they're familiar with the car. And so, we've been doing that. And the nice thing about that is that they can just walk into the DMV and present their materials and walk out with their license. So, they don't have to do that. It's a lot like what the waiver program used to be here. So, it's been a good thing. And so, that's really what the report is for tonight. We'd like to offer that summer class and continue to do what we've been doing with no fee increase, which I think is a great service to the community. Any questions? Want to say anything else?
Boiler up.
Alright.
Hi, gentlemen. We need a motion to approve the new driver's education program. Do I hear a second? All in favor state by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed state by saying no? Motion carries.
Okay. We'll start with handbooks here. I've got about twenty tabs pulled up. So, we'll start with the elementary handbook, and Chrissy, I'll just scroll through. It's really changing gears.
Alright. This is the staff or student?
Elementary student handbook.
For the student, there's not a lot of changes that we have done at the elementary. One of the, there was an extra shot added for our elementary kids that we had to put in from the health department. We made sure and highlighted our dismissal, arrival times, things like that, so we know those are taken care of. Another, larger, just small changes that we've gone through, like taken out assistant superintendents, things like that, cleaning it up. This is probably our biggest change here. Starting next school year, K through five will be complete standard-based report cards. We started off with K one, added to grade two, and then three, they came this year onboard, and then next year will be four and five. So, it will be a complete K five, standard-based report card school, elementary schools for both. So, that eliminated how we're going to do our honor roll, because obviously, as standard-based report cards, you are not in A through F grading scale. And so, Randy and I decided to take all that out, and we're looking at ways to really reward our kids that are doing well with their standards, and not just listing their name because they got an A or B on their report card, really knowing their standards. That was the big one. This is the shot that was updated, so our first kids have to have another shot. They probably won't like that. Other than that, I don't think there are really any, that's just, that's not new, because our raptor system. I think we're going to keep that highlighted so parents know that that's the system we use.
When they come in for lunch.
When they come in for lunch, or whatever. Any questions on student one? I believe the staff will be very similar, very minimal changes. Again, I think the grading scale would have been Again, I think the grading scale would have been taken out of there for our teachers to know. But we really cleaned these up last year, so we felt like we liked how everything was and had given it, or should be, really to, in their place. That's it.
Is that all right? Student handbook?
Yeah. So, page eleven. We just basically added the same warning, the elementary ad on the headlights policy, just to have clarification in there. Some concerns come up early in the year with that, so just making sure that we're consistent across buildings. Page seventeen. Talked to you guys last month, here are building our showcase and spotlight about R and R, the reading or mediation time. So just really listing a little bit of that in the handbook. On our device policy, some teachers had concerns, just headphones and in-ear buds and things in class. So we simply added it as a piece to the one-on-one technology policy. No cell phones, personal devices, headphones or earbuds are allowed to be out inside or make a noise during class time. So basically, during academic time, that stuff's being put away unless the teacher gives them permission to use it for some reason. Page twenty-one, based on recommendations, thanks to Mr. Chriska. At the high school, we added an airdrop to the prohibited list. File here, sharing fees. Page twenty-six, addition of a one-week statement to the athletic eligibility. So really, that just says, you have one week from the time practices start to go out for the team. And at that point, we close. Unless there's a specific situation, an athletic director, it's a little odd, so we're just cleaning that up. And then, very last page of the handbook is just revision of a multiplication chart that's gotta be available to kids for iLearn. We just wanted to have that in, just like they had it in their math classes. Amazing, but pretty simple, student handbook changes, staff handbook, there's just some crazy stuff. So page four is the first one. We require teachers to put student learning objectives on board. We had poster things for them.
This is the classified staff handbook.
We go to staff handbook. Most of the classified stuff is exactly the same. I should say TD. Okay, athletics, fine, we'll start there. So again, just add the one calendar week field participation, they need to join the team within that first week. Just added some notation there for coaches that have kids missed practices, that they could be dismissed from the team for more intense practices. And since one of seven-period days, seven, eight-period days, we shifted to three and a half out of seven periods of eligibility for, basically, gonna be a school half day, just to make that looking. That's it. The athletic coaches handbook, change a quarter week, thanks, you know, you can go to that. Just go to the staff handbook.
Where, where is that? Is it this one?
Uh, right there under your, under the cursor, there. I think so. So go to page four. Like I said, we require teachers to put student learning objectives on board. It's a gal post here, because we made much posters for before, they fall apart, we just didn't really go in front of them. Page eight, we updated the, page eight. We just added in the web names or sub-reporting. So, they're amazing, online, this is just the basic directions where to go. And put information there, it'll be out for the, scrolling down a little bit here, under the cellphone. So basically, just kind of making the staff expectation, here is student expectation, that the cell phones are to be put away during academic time. For kids to gamble for that, we want to make sure we're always counting on that same expectation. Add that. Page nine, field trip fee statement. Basically, we're doing the Viking card sales now, beginning of the year, every year, and our grade-level accounts are building up to be pretty healthy, because that money goes into the sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade accounts. And so, there's a lot of the field trips we take, we don't need to charge them as long, because we have that money saved up from the fundraiser. So just put a notation in there, let people check with me, and we've got the funds, and we don't need to turn around and charge kids a field trip fee, because we've been doing the fundraiser to build those accounts in, so we can do those things. Page ten, school safety section. Just added, if you see something, say something, then at the bottom, just a statement about, that we follow the I Love You Guys Foundation, state response protocols are overarching school safety policy. So it's there, the link to overview is there. Page sixteen, just changed chockable to one-note for a classroom digital platform. Page nineteen, just added our, our time. Page twenty-five, we updated the board members. And then, page twenty-six, again, just added headphones, in-ear buds, device policy, just put a new calendar at the end. Classified handbook has all the same changes, so really pretty simple, just updating some stuff, some minor changes we've made. But nothing, nothing hugely critical, we shifted it on the shelf. Any questions?
Okay, we do have some changes for you to consider. And to go over here at the beginning, just really just replacing the new board members, new personnel, nothing too crazy, really. We look down here to page twenty-five, that was probably the first place I want to get to. And we're looking at the Viking Code. Did that right there in the grade reports, we saw that, that just talks about, wouldn't we send out the grade report? Just sent them out by mail, it's very expensive, looking for Mr. Rob last year, really felt like, just at the end of the semester, would be the right time to do that. And really encouraging parents just to get on SDI and find out what the kids' grades are and those kind of things. But this is, this was really something I know you want to really talk about and really explain what we did here. First of all, there's this Viking Code that we all talked about. Well, there wasn't really ever used that term Viking Code in the handbook, so now it's there, now we know. There's a little ambiguity with the code, is really the problem. And what came up last year is, some parents and some students really felt like, okay, so I'm being disciplined for breaking the rule, and then I'm being disciplined not only by the school, but I'm also being disciplined athletically, and then sometimes they're being disciplined by law. So it was almost like they were getting hit three times, and that didn't necessarily spell that out. It also didn't really talk about, well, what are, what are those violations? What are those certain violations? And also, it lumped in things that you probably, what we felt like you should not receive, half of your athletic year, for example, if you had three charges. And that's actually the way it was written. And the other problem issue, the way it was written, it was really kind of left up to the administrator or the athletic director to kind of determine, well, this was a Viking Code, or this wasn't. It really left us in a bad spot as to, okay, where do we stand? And what happened in a couple situations is we had, well, in this situation, this out, you guys did this back then. So what we wanted to do is really, really make that cut and dry and look at those things. So what you see there is, rule one, two, and three, and four, they really haven't changed. We just kind of put them together, because these are Viking Code violations. Obviously, if you go out and you're a felony, that's a Viking Code. That's obviously a lot different than maybe you copy or copied somebody's homework. Those are the same type of violations, and that's what it was before. And now we want to be able to go to those type of situations and be able to see those differences and make sure that it aligns. So if you scroll just a little bit, Mr. Conley, you see the Viking Code. Again, this hasn't changed. These are the first violations, and second violations, and third violations, and those are what they've always been. But those are if you violate any rules, rules one through four, okay? And then what we did is we took rule five and said, okay, well, these aren't, these are not good things, we don't want anybody doing these. But these aren't necessarily things that if you did wrong, you should be receiving, you know, half your, half of your suspension from your primary athletics or extracurricular activities. So that's what we're seeing. So we just went through there, and this, this really came from Mr. Trowmeyer and myself and Mr. Chriska, really working together and seeing, okay, let's have this make sense. So we weren't put in this situation, but we were a couple of times last year, because of just understanding of, well, who decides this? When does this go? Now it's very, very cut and dry as to those type of things. So we certainly want to call your attention to that and see that, because that is, it's a change, but really what we did is just change the order of things and put the other things into that range of consequences for rule number five. Any questions on that? Okay, good deal. Okay, and then the next one down here is one we really would like you guys to take a look at, is our progressive F policy. In the handbook right now, there is a progressive F policy. There's a lot of issues with this, and we'd like to have this policy completely obliterated and go away. What basically, if you're not familiar with the progressive F policy, is that it requires the athletic director twice, basically every four weeks, they're doing a grade check. Which right now, our athletic director does it pretty much twice a semester, and is in constant communication. But this is meant every four weeks. And so what happened, so let's say we got Mr. Heckman here, first four weeks, he doesn't, didn't do a really good job in English, so he had one F in English, okay? Well, he can still participate, but he's got himself one F. And then, the nine weeks comes around, and he raises his English grade, his math grades, so that's the second F. And even though he'd be IHSA eligible, what that would do is it would cost him his F lines. Because that'd be a progressive F policy, that'd be two, and he'd be out. That's really tough. This, this puts a lot of strain and a lot of time. And if Mr. Trowmeyer, she's willing to do this, and this is what you guys on the board would like us to do, but this, the paper trail and tracking this is very hard. This also, with what we're trying to do in the classroom, allowing kids to redo assignments if they don't do very well, or to earn the right to make a re-take a quiz. It also then, it really kind of goes against that. What we're trying to do is get kids to play and be involved, and this really policy kind of works the other way. Understand why the policy was in place, but I think with where we're at and what we're trying to do in the classroom, and then just keep it up with the grades. Now you're really, teachers gotta really make sure, it's not every nine weeks. And yeah, we want our teachers to do that, but accepting in that late work and really staying on top of it, it's really, it'd be very, very difficult. So we'd like you to take a look at that. And if more than anything, if this is something you guys really do want to keep, let us know, and we'll follow you and lead in that direction. But our recommendation is that we need to get rid of this. It's really a lot more stringent than the IHSA. You know, by the IHSA rule, you can have two Fs in play, live or not. You can have, as long as you're passing by the silos, you could, not that we want any of our athletes to do that, but make it to where at the quarter, and then, you know, then that one is with you. That, that's tough. And I think that's going to the other end, really going against what we're trying to do in the classroom with our teachers. All right, so just, you know, really adding some things here about, you know, cell phones in the locker rooms, and what you should and should not be doing with that. Really nothing there. Let's go ahead, there's a lot of organizations this year. We have like our band, choir, FFA. Some of our organizations maybe had demands for, that you had to meet requirements. Band would be the first one to come to mind, so if you're in the band, and all of Miss Turner's great job, she expects you to be at the pep. Well, what happens in her rulebook, if the kid is not at the pep band, you can only miss so many times, well, then you go along and go to be in the band. But we didn't have a policy besides her syllabus stating those kind of things. So what we wanted to make sure, that we had that in the board through policy for band, we have one in the new edition choir, we have one for FFA, we have media center, student council is another one, that really just lays out, hey, these are their rules. I mean, this may be a little bit different, not so good, but more stringent than what is in there. But if you want to be in these organizations, this is what it takes. So we wanted to have that vacuum versus then just saying, okay, well, you're out. Well, they didn't really give us a way to stand on. So we asked you to look at those policies too this year. We also, on page sixty-seven, we had language about sexting and airdropping. Certainly want to make sure we can have a policy. Never thought I would have a policy for those type of things, but we did have an incident here at lunch, and so now we've got that very much spelled out in the new handbook. To continue down to eighty-seven, page eighty-seven, we talked about all smoking devices, and whether it's vaping, which honestly, we haven't seen that much this year, knock on wood. It's been a really good year, I think it speaks volumes to the jobs that Mr. Chriska did last year, really hitting, hammering down on people. And I think the word is out, that if you do that here at school, you're gonna get in trouble, and it's gonna be a Viking Code. And so, we're not really seeing so much of that as what we were in some of the area schools, which is really good. One other thing too, we added, that the items will be confiscated and not given back. We had a couple of, well, meeting members that wanted their child titles back. I guess it can be rather expensive, I don't know what you mean by that. But anyways, we made sure that those are going to handle with law enforcement, they can go handle that or shoot for them. And then, of course, too, we added the graduation pathways as well. So those are, you know, some changes. The big one there is really the progressive F policy, and just looking at how it worked with the Viking Code, we'd like you to take a look at this. Staff handbook, there's very little in here in the staff handbook. We followed Mr. Back's lead, thank you very much for adding the I Love You Guys Foundation, school safety. We did add a cellphone usage policy for the staff. We did also make some minor changes with just making sure the right teacher day was in there, how to report an absent to the subfinder. And then just also make sure that we really emphasized and cleaned up how the issues we needed to call CPS and we not to, and make sure the numbers are in there. So really nothing. Staff handbook. That, that's, okay, sure, we can talk more about this, okay? Go ahead, go find my cheat sheet here. Okay.
It just looks like kind of, the change in band was working with teachers and some.
Yeah.
It was really more rewording.
Okay. In the past, there was this whole thing about how a teacher needed to go ahead and call home before they could send the kid down to us. And Brandon and I were like, just send it to us, you keep teaching, we've got a problem, we'll take care of it, we'll be later, and just, and then really, there was, there was paper. They're running a lot of like, like three-D copies, and like one copy. We just, just put it on, put it into the student management service and get it to us and look at it, really just saving steps there. So, yeah, not, not a big change there, just telling the staff how, if they give them the problem, the word, they've got their backs. Yeah. And then athletic handbook is really just, gonna appear again, but we just did, but it's just, now it's also in the athletic handbook, talking about what the Viking Code is, and then, you know, the rule one, two, three, four, and five, and then out. And I guess, too, just, just to talk about rule five a second, if you could just go up just a second, Mr. Conley. You know, these are things where rule five, where Brandon and I like, you know, so, okay, an athlete messes up, that's not a good thing, but a lot of times, we like to go to the coach, you know? And just say, hey, can you handle this knucklehead? I mean, they're acting up a little bit, you know, whether that's a little more up downs or whatever it might be, you know, for a minor violation. And that, those are the kind of things that we're talking about here, or maybe, you know, hey, if they do get an in-school or an out-of-school suspension, those rules are aligned with those type of activities. Not that we want any of our athletes doing it, these aren't things that you should lose half of your parts, it would be anything, obviously. So just kind of giving us, give us that.
Other, we've got the Tippoon Valley English Club. Mr. Backs?
Well, this is kind of a personal thing for me, because I got to go to my house that actually fishes some tournaments already. So somewhere down the road, you know, this is gonna be a piece that I was gonna bring and talk about us doing anyway. But I had a group of high school boys come and see me about three weeks ago, that are really interested in starting a high school English club, which we've had in the past. There's been different times through, through our school corporation. There's been different times through, through our school corporation history that we've had a club here that met and, you know, did trips and things like that together. Um, but what they wanna do as a component of this is actually have a team from Tippecanoe Valley that competes competitively in events. And so, when they came and talked to me, we spent some time doing some research. Uh, presented some information, Mr. Kreip, about what it is that we'd like to be doing. But what we found and what I share with you guys in the package is basically that there's two sanctioning bodies that do high school fishing competitions in the state of Indiana, the Bass Angler Sports Society and the F L W Tour. So, in our research, what we discovered was the F L W tour side, uh, tournaments in the north half of the state where bass are, they're all in the south. So, we have to go to the bigger reservoirs in the south to fish. They're longer trips. Have to be overnight and stuff to be more costly both. But in essence, we're gonna be able to, if you guys approve this tonight, put a group of two high school kids and a group of two middle school kids in four competitive bass tournaments this spring and this summer as Tippecanoe Valley's high school team. Um, the tournament's running in the spring and the summer, um, competing against other schools. The idea behind the anglers club is that we're gonna get as many kids at Tippecanoe Valley that are interested in fishing as a sport, uh, together. And we're gonna do local events in the fall. So, we'll find some places around here where we can take our kids, do some activities. But part of this is also community service. Part of this is academics. So, I'll pass this down the road. But, um, the boys and I sat down and talked about sort of the points system a little bit today. And we kind of took a lot of this from other clubs. But in essence, what it is, is you start your season in July and you do local activities. So, there's community service in the fall. Uh, you do three to four local competitions with your kids at your club. And they earn points. So, community services were so many points. How they score in the tournaments, competing against each other's were so many points. But there's also, and this is the part I really like, and I know Mr. Kreip liked this too when we talked, part of the points is grades, attendance, and behavior. And so, we spend the fall building all these points up. And then the guys that, or the guys or gals, whoever it is, because it's open to anybody, who finish in the top two spots in the points for your anglers that fish the summer turner, or the spring and summer tournaments the next year against the other schools. So, in essence, you have your own club. And in your own club, you run this point system that involves all these different things. And then the guys that, and gals that finish at the top end are the ones that are, you know, turn around and go represent our school in these activities. There's four tournaments this spring. The first one's in April at Lake Freeman. Uh, there's one on Lake Maxicucke. There's one on Lake Manaton. There's one on Hamilton Lake, which is up around Campbellville. If our guys or gals that fish in those tournaments qualify, um, the state tournament is in Brookville Reservoir. And if they place in the state tournament in Brookville, the national tournament for F L W is on Lake Hartwell in Alabama in August. So, you know, there's an opportunity for kids to compete. But more importantly, this is an opportunity for all the kids at Tippecanoe Valley High School that wanna be involved in this. And then also, middle school component, uh, if you get enough of all the support to help to be involved at a local level doing community service, fishing, having some fun. Um, this spring, we're not gonna have time, obviously, to do a point system and get all of that stuff in place in time for the tournaments. So, I felt really strongly like the group of guys that worked to put this together are, are the guys that I'm probably gonna take and let them do the tournament competitions this year with the idea that we started July with the whole club and we build towards, um, you know, that whole point system and choosing the people based on that point system for next year. Uh, we've got, we've got some money that, that has to happen here. So, uh, our goal, we, we met tonight after school and talked, our goal is to get kind of our paperwork and everything ready to go. Have a call-out meeting over here after spring break. When we, we get back, that'll give us time to, to work on forms and work on some activity locations and things. Um, our goal would be to have the call-out meetings, see what our numbers look like. It's twenty-five dollars per kid dues yearly to be in the club. And that twenty-five dollars pays for their membership with the Student Angler Federation. That federation, if they're a member, that allows them to fish in the tournaments. It also provides liability coverage for the kids participating in tournaments. So, you know, from an insurance standpoint, the, the foundation helps cover what we do. Fishing's a lot of fun and it's primarily safe, but there are some dangers, obviously, being out of the lake, the boat, hooks, all those kind of stuff. So, um, provides coverage. And then, the, for the kids to fish in the tournaments, there has to be a coach slash captain in the boat that's an adult. Um, the boat has to be, has to fit the federation guidelines and also be legal by the state. The captain has to have a legal fishing license. So, probably the hardest thing for me is gonna be sitting in my boat for eight hours with two guys when I don't get to pick up the fishing rod. But, um, we've got two guys right now, myself, and I think I listed on there, Josh Shepherd, a friend of mine, is really interested in helping. Both of us have boats. We both turn them and fish. So, we both have experience with that. And like to be able to take a high school and a junior team this spring to fish in those tournaments and then build the club into next year and potentially get some more kids involved. Uh, a couple of these local tournaments, uh, the directors talked like they would possibly allow more than one high school team from our school. So, to do that, we just need to have additional people, adults with boats available, the background check, the approval to take the kids. But it's dependent on the tournament. So, you know, we've got mulling. We started soccer. We've done a lot of really cool things around here. And I think you'd be surprised the number of kids will really get into this and have a good time with it. And I think it's, uh, it's a good opportunity for some of our kids that aren't necessarily our mainstream athletes to be involved. And knowing they have to meet Viking code expectations, knowing that they've gotta keep their grades up, knowing they gotta do community service is all a good thing. Get involved in something like this. So.
I think the only thing that we've been needing is for that information to be in the handbook as a, as a new club.
Yeah.
We really don't need approval, but it's, it's informational to put it in there.
And you guys don't publish yours. It just goes on the internet, right? So, I can get it to you whenever. It's not a matter of, because we're still tweaking some of those things based on how this goes.
I didn't see the part where you guys said you bathe my leg and take some fish.
It might be in the bylaws now. Or maybe there was something about if you can't touch and fish, you can't be in the club.
Hey, you got a bopper. What kind of startup, are you guys a startup expense? Are you gonna have to ask for some donations? Is that what?
So, one of the things, one of the things we talked about today, the boys and I got together after school, and they wanted to be here, but they've got baseball practice tonight. My expectation for this is it's not gonna take the place of school sports. And I was very clear with those guys that you're not gonna skip school sporting events and do this stuff. Uh, so, what we talked about is that, yes, we, we're gonna have to look into getting sponsorships because, um, the tournament entry, like, like for this four, four tournament series, it's eighty-five dollars per, to fish the four tournaments. So, if we put four kids in, that's four times eighty-five dollars just for the entry fee to go, you know, and I don't mind volunteering my time, but it would be nice to just help drive kids to these places with some gas, money, stuff like that. Um, so, we talked about sort of setting up a fundraiser sheet to go solicit some sponsorships. Because the cool thing about fishing is they make these really great jerseys with everybody's logos on them, you know, like splinter boats right in the middle. But the other thing is we, a lot of the kids that are talking about this are really excited about getting the jersey. And then we would also probably have a full-up banner that we would take with us to the tournaments, our outings that we would put up for when we do pictures and a lot of that stuff to get out on social media. So, we wanna solicit some donations from some local businesses. I talked to the kids about putting form letter together and mailing it to a lot of these outdoor companies. Because, you know, a lot of times, you know, if you're gonna send, you know, sanitary rods, they better, you know, you're running a club, it's doing community service, they may send product to you for the case you use too. So, we're looking at all those different avenues. Uh, we've talked to Robert Sides. They can do a fishing jersey. They just need the design and all the stuff and more to put on it. So, you know, there, there's a lot of cool stuff that we could do with this. The main thing is we wanna get it off the ground. We wanna get all of the, sort of that point system set up and get things rolling so that we can move into the fall with opportunities to, to run a whole year series with it. Um, the other cool thing is that the Student Angler Federation allows seniors. So, if Dylan was in the fishing club and he was on my tourney team, just because he graduates doesn't mean he's done. He would get to finish the entire summer series and tournament before he finishes with the clubs. And it'd continue until after the summer season is finished. They're not just cut off to a second.
So, if people want to donate, they may have a contact.
Contact me directly. So.
I thought about donation for filets. There's a ride to be in.
Well, my thing was, and this was the other thing we talked to about, is that if we do this points thing, and we have a top ten and a couple anglers from here who'd like to have a banquet, that'd be a great time to invite local donors and sponsors out, do fish rides for those guys too. So, you know, I'm, I'm pretty good at putting those on. We even talked about hooking up with Lions, former community service sites that we can build, you know, help serve and do different things like that. But really like the idea of the Student Angler Federation putting the academics and the community services in. And they did this. Part of it is not just getting together, meeting up somebody's family. I think it's, you know, a lot of the things for outreach and caring.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Awesome.
I think that's always happened with cities. We will look at that.